I know, I haven't been able to watch it. Tim was on it.
Hmm?
Tim was on Cowl Land.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I haven't been able to watch it yet. Yeah, Tim was on TV.
About what?
About golf course. They did interview, I think, Tim and Andrew, right?
Yes, that would be during the public.
Even though it's going to be talked about way later?
Yeah, I think so. Okay, I believe it's six o'clock. I'll call the meeting of the Brandon City Council to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to all. We've got quite a robust agenda tonight, so we'll try to keep things moving along as well as we can. We'll start with roll call.
Clark.
Here.
David.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Jorgensen.
Here.
Call.
Here.
Parliament.
Here.
Mayor Heinens.
Here. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as written. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. In front of you, you have the minutes from the March 31 briefing meeting, the April 4 council meeting, and then the special meeting on April 11.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the approval of the minutes. Are there any questions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Listed on pages 30 to 32 are the claims.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second for the claims as listed. Any questions, clarification on any of those? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent calendar, Brian, anything there that needs to?
Just Platts.
Just the Platts. Several of them.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we take public input, and if there are items that you would like to speak to, we ask you. We will hold you to five minutes. I, we do appreciate the comments that we get, but obviously at times it can get a little long, so five minutes. But, so if you have something you want to make public comment on, approach the podium. Let us know who you are, where you live, and go from there.
Lee Skelling, 204 Elm Circle, Brandon. A little bit later on the agenda tonight, you're going to talk a little bit about the water treatment plant. I just wanted to share some of my thoughts on the reverse osmosis system. I'd like you to, I see about three people. Jack, looks like you got a bottle like this. Why do you have a bottle like that? Why don't you have one that can be filled?
Convenience.
Okay. Anybody else? I think waters.
I've heard many times here.
Okay, good. Water is going to be our next generation's oil. I think if we got good water, we got gold. I think the decision that you're going to make a little bit later is very similar to like when you're going to go buy a computer or a new phone. The rep says, what are you doing, what are you going to use it for? Going to take pictures? You're going to watch videos? You're going to store a lot of stuff on it? What are you going to do with it? He leads you over to this decision. A little bit later, you're going to be making the decision what people are going to do with the water. Are they going to drink it? They're going to bathe? Going to wash their car? Water their yard? I'd like you to consider the reverse osmosis system. Brandon is a great place to live. We have a great community. Our school system is a big thing. Water, I think, is our weak link. Obviously, I'm in the real estate sales business. We see a lot of houses with reverse osmosis systems. Think it's a positive thing. I have one. I want you to consider the reverse osmosis system, even though there's an opportunity to say yes or no on that. It's the, what your vote, you're going to talk about is today for us, but I think also for future generations. So, I'd like Brandon to be able to fill their jugs, just like out of the dispenser there, and rely less on these. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you, Lee. I think just for clarification, I don't think we're quite voting yet tonight whether or not, are we, we are not, are we voting?
Yeah, the bid is here with all of the numbers.
Okay.
Up to the council if they want to make that decision tonight. We do have a 30-day window which to accept the bids.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm TJ Cameron, 2821 East Daybreak Circle. Later on the agenda, I know that you'll be appointing one of the applicants for the council position, and I'm here to ask for your support, for me to get appointed to that position. For those of you that do already support me, that we've talked about things, I definitely challenge you to, you know, step up and express your courage and hopefully make the recommendation to, and motion to allow a vote for me. I think that my commitment, tenacity, and reasons that I want to serve Brandon should be clear by now after six years of hoping to contribute at a higher level to our community, and that of the recent vote, which I totally respect and will 100% follow our new mayor, and I've asked all my supporters to do the exact same. But I do think that the turnout says something for the support of those that would like to see me on council. One thing I did want to address is, for those of you that, you know, may have had hesitations about our personality mixes, I can totally respect that. My entire professional career, especially in the corporate world and with my own business, I found great value in building teams with personalities that may be 100% different than mine. And, you know, people would think, well, how will you work together? But sometimes the most diverse teams in personality mixes come up with the greatest ideas, the best solutions. It's just important that we know each other, and I have learned this in my career, how to appreciate other personality styles. And you won't have any problem with that for me because my entire intent is to be a positive influence here in Brandon and connect with our current audience and maybe even another audience that we could reach at another level communicating with and keep them supporters and active and positive for Brandon. I'm a very reasonable person. Barb, I wanted to bring up that you probably have experienced this with me when there was a fireworks, you know, item on the agenda, and although I have a huge financial interest in fireworks, Barb had asked me for some information, and this is, you know, public info about, you know, to learn a little more about fireworks. And I even came to the table with a compromise ordinance, this was prior to the public vote, that would have probably impacted 30% of my own personal businesses' sales in a negative way by offering away from allowing everything to allowing restricting certain items. And I did that proactively because I thought it was best for our community, and today I still stand here as a fireworks owner and still think that that's probably the best solution. That would have limited some items that account for over 30% of my sales, and I thought that was a big sacrifice to do what was right for our community, so I'm a very reasonable person, and I'd like to, you know, have you think about that. Also, when we decided to ban it, a resident took it upon themselves to go out petition, and then the public spoke otherwise, and now that was beyond our control. But I made that financial sacrifice because I thought it was best for our community, or wanted to make that financial sacrifice. Dave, I know, again, and I'm referring to fireworks, but when you were the chief of police, I know that, you know, you weren't a super fan of the fireworks season because you had to go out and enforce it, and everyone was shooting them all over the place, but I was always, I thought, at least a good steward to our community. Came down either proactively, or you or one of your officers would come out, and I always handed out, you know, the ordinances and educated my customers as much as I could on the rules, because I wanted what's best for our community. And I bring up those couple examples tonight because I do know that there may be a perception that for some reason, I may not be reasonable or something, I'm not quite sure. I have yet to have anybody tell me exactly why, but I'm a very reasonable person, and I want what's best for this community. And I'd really like to serve in this capacity, and I'd really like to earn your support. And that's just one or two quick examples that I brought up, as far as where I'm a very positive influence. And I think that when you sacrifice financially for your community, because you think it's best for your community, I do think that's a very, you know, logical reason. I definitely do not, not support or condone any of the negative groups on social media. I think that right now, I would tell you publicly, and I've said it before, that if I could shut them down, I would. And if they're listening now, I hope they are, I think they should shut down their negative social media groups, especially things like the dirt. A prior council member that caused a lot of disruption in town, I told him face to face that if he ran for mayor, I'd run against him. Luckily, at that time, we had Paul Lundberg step up, who ran, and I knew that that was a great candidate, and I was actually in the hospital for a few weeks right before that election, so I didn't get a chance to run against him. He no longer even lives in this community, but if he ever moved back and he ever ran for mayor or any other seat, I would run against him. So I make that commitment to you, just to make it crystal clear that there's no affiliation or support for me for any of the negativity. I do embrace digital communication and technology, but I want to make it crystal clear that I'm on your side when it comes to a positive perception and impression for our community and solutions. I do know there's a couple of people here tonight, but I want to just take a quick minute, I know I only have a couple left, but to share one person that wanted to come tonight, couldn't, couldn't make it. She's a teacher here in town, and she has sent me a recommendation letter prior for a position that I applied for as CEO, and I asked her, since you can't make it, would you be okay with me sharing a few comments from your recommendation to the CEO role that you wrote for me, and she said absolutely. And she said she couldn't be happier to recommend TJ Cameron for the CEO position. She's known me for approximately seven years, and while living in the same neighborhood, I can confidently say he's a person of exemplary character. TJ's been a very active citizen in Brandon. His involvement in local government and works to better our community. He's extremely open in hearing people's thoughts and concerns, remaining professional and respectful. He has the qualities one would want in a leadership role. TJ's owned and operated a fireworks business in Brandon for several years. He has employed two of my children, my own children, and other youth in our neighborhood. He's been a great mentor to my daughter, teaching her how to interact with customers from a young age. She has an abundance of confidence, and we believe it's because of TJ gave her the opportunity to develop those people's skills and mentor her. Those who interact with TJ are drawn to his charismatic personality, kind, warm-hearted nature. Wherever there's a need for volunteers in our town or support, TJ steps out without the slightest hesitation, eager to help in any way he can. This individual's been a coach on MB's Girls on the Run program for a number of years. Highly recommend TJ for this position. I have no doubt he'll make strong addition to any leadership team. I have, and you could reference these if you'd like prior to your vote, and I'll share them with you, but several other referenced letters here from a similar position or when I've gone for appointments in the past with our community, so I'd have those available for reference for you. The only other one that I specifically wanted, well, there's two other things I wanted to specifically bring up. One was when I did go for the mayor appointment, when we had the prior resignation, I received an endorsement, and I reached out again to make sure that this still was okay to share, and this is from the Brookings County Sheriff's Marty Stamwick, to whom it may concern. I'm writing this letter on behalf of TJ Cameron. This is my understanding that he's interested in the position of interim mayor within the city of Brandon. Again, this was 2018, but he said that he would still allow me to share this letter. I knew TJ as a youth growing up in Brookings. Being raised by a single mother, he had the drive and desire to make something of himself. While in school, he participated in sports, was involved in Brookings Optimist Club, and frequently volunteered in the classroom, special needs, and other living facilities. TJ graduated from high school in three years in accelerated education program, placing in the top 10% of his class. He also served on student council and helped special needs students in school. I followed TJ after he left Brookings and am delighted to see him succeed in his retail sales career. His personality, drive, willingness to help the people and community involvement would make him an excellent choice for interim mayor of Brandon. Sincerely, Marty Stamwick, Sheriff of Brookings County. Finally, I know that you received a, at least an email, and I believe there may be a person or two here tonight that want to share some support, but from Eric Berkman, and since I'm running short on time, I'll paraphrase, but you, I know you received the email because he included me on it, but Eric Berkman resides in Ward 2, been a resident for 29 years. Married a local gal, Stephanie, 18 years, has a few children, and he's known me since shortly after I moved here.
Is now joining the conference.
Eric used to own True Value, which is now Ace Hardware, and he's had various careers since then. He's aware of our challenges as a growing community from when we were small and growing, and, you know, I'm skipping a couple of paragraphs for time's sake, but purpose of this email is he couldn't make it tonight's meeting. But he would be concerned if the council overlooked a great candidate for the Ward 3 appointment. Council has a candidate that's well-versed in the issues of the city that Brandon's facing and experienced. He has experienced running a successful business. He knows the level of commitment it takes to be successful and willing to take those businesses to help the city of Brandon grow. He also faced adversity in the business world. He's gained a plethora of knowledge from his experience and adversity. The experience gained from being a business owner has enabled him to bring people together to resolve issues. He's a strategic thinker, takes everyone's input seriously. The person I'm talking about is TJ Cameron. He's a fighter, not a quitter. He ran for mayor, and he didn't win. He was the, he was able to communicate his knowledge of the issues Brandon is facing. TJ has engaged a new group of residents that previously may not have been totally engaged. I'm a, I'm a prime example. Eric was speaking about himself. He wasn't always engaged in these type of discussions. Why would you not do what someone committed to the, why would you not do what someone committed to the city and community and supports the community? To me, it seems like the logical choice. If the other candidates want to be appointed to the positions and were generally interested, they would have committed to the process of running. They would have educated themselves on the issues that Brandon was facing. And I did share with Eric that I did not turn in the paperwork for Ward 3, but that I had collected the proper signatures. But when I ran for mayor, I had to make the choice of which position to submit, and I had 70-some signatures from Ward 3 and about the same for the mayor race. So, I just really hope that I could join your team and be a collaborative partner to all of you in the council and what's best for our community. Obviously, when this comes up on the agenda later, if you have any further questions, I'd be 100% transparent and willing to answer them, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, TJ.
Good evening. My name's Dan Nelson. I'm a resident of Brandon.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Dan Nelson. I'm a resident of Brandon. I live in Ward 3 at 2800 East Daybreak Circle. I'm here tonight to speak in support of TJ Cameron for the open city council seat. First, a little of my background. I've been married to my wife Dee Dee for 35 years. I have two daughters, 20 and 24. My oldest daughter lives in Denver. My youngest goes to school at USD in Vermillion. My wife is the head cook at Brandon Elementary. Myself, I've been in the insurance industry for 36 years, focused on workers' compensation insurance. I was responsible for underwriting claims and policy issuance of workers' compensation policies for 10 states, including South Dakota. I have met with insurance company presidents and CEOs. My current clients are insurance department commissioners, directors, and superintendents for four states in the upper Midwest, including South Dakota. I can tell you from my business experience that TJ embodies the characteristics similar to insurance company presidents and insurance commissioners. He is energetic, thoughtful, and thinks strategically. He is able to lead people to solutions. TJ recently ran for mayor of Brandon. While he did not win, he was able to demonstrate his comprehensive knowledge of the issues currently facing Brandon. To me, it seems logical to have a city council member that knows, understands, and has put forth solutions to the issues facing Brandon. I mean, the fact that he is still interested in city government after just losing the mayoral race last week, that should tell you something about his commitment. He's a successful businessperson. He owns and operates a multi-location fireworks business. He owns and is involved in the operation of an insurance agency, Central States Insurance. He and his wife own and operate The Pickle Barrel, a sandwich shop in Sioux Falls. He's an entrepreneur and has several other business ideas he's working on. He's the father of two young boys, and he's committed to making Brandon a better place to live and raise children. When I first moved to Brandon two years ago, TJ was one of the first neighbors to knock on my door to introduce himself and invite me to his wife's birthday party. He also offered a summer job to my youngest daughter, and she enjoyed working for him and his wife. He's also invited me to various community events in the area that has allowed me to become acclimated to Brandon and the surrounding area quickly. He's an open and honest person. I believe he is the best candidate for this open city council position, and I hope you will agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Again, Collinstein, 905 South Fifth Avenue here in Brandon. Again, I stand before you humbled for the opportunity to possibly have the open seat in Ward 3. Again, you guys all heard us last week. You've got some great candidates to choose from. I myself feel like I'm a strong candidate for the position. Yes, I understand I don't have the knowledge maybe that TJ or others may have, but what I do have is I have experience, you know, running my, running a residential appraisal business now for 12 years. My prior experience with the Sioux Falls Storm, helping lead, leading that organization, and just, not that sports is always everything, but what sports has taught me all of the years and all the years that I played is teamwork, and that's what I feel like I can bring to this city council, is teamwork. I want to learn. I didn't know how to be, become an appraiser. I didn't know how to run a Sioux Falls Storm football team, but I learned, and that's what I'm looking forward to, this opportunity, and get a chance to serve alongside you and this great city of, city of Brandon. So, I look forward to the opportunity, and again, I humbly stand before you and ask for that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Collin.
Still up. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I feel compelled to now. When it comes to recommendations, I didn't put it in my resume that I turned in.
Hey, Thomas, can we have your name and address, please?
Oh, sorry. Thomas Nichols, 105 South Brandon Place, or Augusta Place in Brandon. When it comes to recommendations from others, I've had people stand up for me all throughout my life, for all the different positions I had. These people who wrote letters supporting me were judges, lawyers, contractors, ministers of all denominations, police on the bomb squad in California, sheriff's department in Michigan, that I rode in their cars with them as a minister. I've had a lot of letters written for me so that I could do all the things I did in my life. And I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of all those things and know that I really want this job. Thank you.
Thank you, Collin.
Hello. Cody Klyts, 1620 South River Oak Avenue, Ward 1. So even though I'm not part of Ward 3, I do wanted to come tonight and put in my support for TJ Cameron for the city council position. We moved up here from Kansas about 12 years, well, about 10 years ago, 2012. And we haven't, my wife and I haven't been in, involved as much as we probably should, but one person that kind of got us involved was TJ. And I believe based on the results of last week, and even though he wasn't able to win, you can see that a lot of people really want TJ a part of this community and making decisions for this community. So, I'll keep it short and sweet. I just want to make sure that you consider him for this position as I think he's the best person for the job. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Appreciate the comments from each and all of you.
One more.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
My apologies. I was taking off my jacket when you asked if there was anyone else.
No problem.
Brett Zatrowski, 2518 East Augusta Street. I appreciate the opportunity to come up, talk before everybody. I did want to address the water issue, or the water proposal that was previously talked about with the RO system. I know it was previously discussed a little bit. I think water's a pretty important issue for everybody, and I think it's a pretty neat issue that we have the opportunity to have this type of decision before us. I had some family that moved to Idaho a couple of years ago, and when we were visiting them, we asked them, hey, what do you guys miss? They lived in the Sioux Falls area. Said, what do you guys miss about the Sioux Falls area the most? And to my surprise, they said, actually, the water in Sioux Falls is much better than anywhere else that we've lived. I think we have the opportunity and the ability by installing a system that has the reverse osmosis capabilities to have that type of quality water. I think water's something that we interact with on a daily basis. We don't really, really think about it a lot. It's something that we do just out of nature, but for the whole community, for people that don't have water softener systems, for people that maybe don't already have reverse osmosis systems installed, I think that it would be a huge benefit. So, if we do end up voting on this, I know, Jim, you had talked about may or may not, I'm not sure if you will, but I'd like to put my support behind it because I think that would be a huge asset for the community. I know that there's a financial cost that goes along with that. There's been other proposals, but there's also some grants, or a grant that would make it more affordable and could buffer some of that cost, which would, in my opinion, be a huge asset, not only for us, but for those that would come after us. And as this community grows, I mean, Brandon is growing, and it's something that I think should be considered for the people that are looking to relocate and move to Brandon. So, I just wanted to talk about that. It's a pretty important issue, in my opinion, and something that affects really all of us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Good comment. Anyone else?
Little detour on subject matter. Sue Eckert. I live on the corner of Second and Elm at house number 301. And I am switching over to a concern of mine with the ongoing street reconstruction. I am fortunate enough by living on a corner that I also have multiple garages, and that thusly multiple driveways. The project that concerned my double attached garage is already finished. It did not leave me with enough length of driveway to park a car outside my garage without overhanging the sidewalk. I'm hoping that when the project is done on the east side of my house, that it would be taken into consideration to perhaps leave me enough of a driveway to park a vehicle. Well, I live by the school. Parking gets a little bit testy sometimes. I have a fire hydrant. I've got an electrical box, all sorts of, you can't park from the corner to here, and you can't block the mailbox, et cetera. I'd like to be able to park in a driveway if I could. Thank you.
Thank you. Seems reasonable request, anyway. Okay, we'll move on to Item C, canvassing board certify results of mayoral and Ward 1 council elections.
So, it'll be two separate motions, because on the mayoral, whoever's on the ballot cannot vote during that canvassing board. So, there's two different canvassing minutes there, so it'll be two separate motions.
I'll make a motion that we certify the results of the mayoral. Second.
We have a motion and a second to certify the results of the mayoral election. Any questions, comments?
All of the same, right?
Correct.
Hearing none. All in favor of accepting the results, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Harry Buck. I'm excited to, and I know you're going to do a great job, and appreciate the fact that you've stepped up into the position, so best wishes. and appreciate the fact that you've stepped up into the position, so best wishes. Next, we have the Ward One council election.
I have a motion to certify the results of Ward One.
I'll second.
Everybody wants to second you, Barb. We have a motion and a second to certify the results of the Ward One council election. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I also want to thank Barb for making the decision. Her experience on the board is invaluable, and your commitment of time is truly significant for this community. And your experience has been very valuable to the community, so thank you. Safety Month proclamation. Is there anything there we need to do, Brian?
No action necessary to, just you need to proclaim May as safety month.
You want me to read through it all?
We always leave that up to the discretion of the mayor if you want to read the whole page, or if you just want to declare.
It's only about eight to 10 minutes, if you'd like. Okay, I'll read the last. Now therefore, I, Jim Heinitz, Mayor Brandon, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities. Okay, we'll move on. ISG Task One, Report on City Hall. You have in front of you the assessment that was done.
ISG is here to give you kind of the overview of that.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Well, thank you for taking the time this evening. We were here last month, I believe it was, just over a month ago. And at that time, we talked about going through a couple of different phases. This first one being a structural assessment of this facility and the one just to the north. So today is just kind of a findings of what we had identified. We had a few people included as part of that project team. Myself, Josh Muckenhern, I'm an architect. Matthew LaVoy, I'll let you introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone. My name is Matthew LaVoy. I'm a graduate structural engineer with ISG. Graduate meaning I'm not licensed engineer yet. I performed the assessment under the guidance of Sam Brock, just my licensed engineer and our practice group leader at ISG.
And as another piece of that first phase, we had a 3D scan. We did a 3D scan of both this building and the one to the north. And that just helped identify some of the more, I guess, forensic nature of it. You know, it's allowed us to be able to actually produce the existing drawings to identify and verify some of the existing conditions of the facilities. So this slide here is just a brief overview. It's in the full report that I believe was shared with the city council. But this is just kind of a given idea, so, you know, green, yellow, red, good, fair, poor. Just giving you a kind of easy idea of, you know, it's, these are some things that just perform routine maintenance, nothing really to be concerned about. All the way to poor, poor are the ones where we're kind of identified. You know, that is, should be identified as something to take a deeper look at in the very near future. And I will hand it over to Matt, because I know he was very involved with the structural piece to all of this.
So we're going to start with just grand overview, I guess, of your current facilities. We started at the city hall building, which is on the north there. That's the ABC and D, and then we went over to the city council chamber building, which is on the south, buildings E and F. We obtained exact building dates, or rough building dates, with the help of Christina. Initially, we believe building B was the original building that was constructed in 1917. Then an addition was made on the southwest corner, that'd be building C in 1953. And then building A was added in the late 1990s, and building D was added in the late, early 2000s, excuse me. And then buildings E and F there being the city council chamber building. We believe F was the original structure, and then the E portion was added on to at some point afterward. In general, everything is wood construction. All the framing is made from wood, except for building E, which has the main, main structural system is structural steel for the roof. All of the exterior walls, we believe, are either structural clay tile or concrete masonry units. So just a first note is about the drainage in the building. And talking to some of the folks that work in the building every day, they noted that in the springtime, there tends to be water that floods into the basement. I was able to identify that on the north side of the building, there's a pretty significant low spot that water seems to collect in, that may be leading to some of that water getting into the basement. We're not sure if that's the exact cause for sure. There could be, you know, portions that we'll see later on where there's water ponding on parts of the roof that could be leaking down into the walls and getting into the basement as well. So the recommendation, yeah, is just to improve the drainage, obviously. The roof, we were not able to access the roof on the city council chamber building at the time of our, at the time of our assessment. The city hall roof, we don't know for certain, but we believe the last time it was replaced was when the addition, I believe it was D, was added in the early 2000s. That would put it kind of somewhere in the 20 to 25-year-old range, which is generally the usable life for a single ply EPDM roof. We noticed, as you can, it's difficult to tell in the picture. I apologize for the size of the image. But on the far side, that would be the east side of the original building, B. There's a pretty significant amount of water ponding there. We believe that some of that water is ponding there and finding its way into the exterior wall on the east side of the original building, which is causing some pretty significant deterioration, as I'm sure you all have seen. The membrane itself, the joints were cracking and shrinking to the point where the next step would likely to be replace the entire membrane on the roof. On the original building and the addition made to the south, being building C, we felt some soft spots when we were walking up there, which might indicate that it's either the insulation is a little bit spongy or some of the sheathing, actually, that's over top of the roof joists might be a little bit rotted in some spots. Obviously, we couldn't tell without some sort of destructive investigation. So if and when the roof is replaced, that's something that the contractor would need to take a look at.
We weren't able to get on this roof?
We ran out of time to get on the roof of this building. We suspect that it's a similar age as the roof on the city hall building, just based on what we can see from pictures. And we were able to sort of look over that direction while we were up on the roof of the city hall building. And we suspect it's in similar condition.
Even though it's steel?
Oh, sorry.
Even though it's steel?
The interior structure, the steel beam line is in good condition. No, no concerns with that.
It's a membrane roof here.
Correct. Yep, yep.
And it is our understanding that this roof has not been replaced since, you know, as a separate project, since those roofs on the north side have been replaced.
And when was this built?
The original building was 58.
58, I believe.
53, and then the north portion was like 60. So the roof, the roof is not original to the original building. I'd assume it was replaced at some point, so it's not a 60-year-old roof. I'm guessing it's probably around the same age, the 20, 25 year, based on what we were able to see of it.
Can anyone tell me when the last time it was replaced? As in ever?
He thinks when they, when they did the one over there, they did this at the same time, 20.
That's our, that's our assumption. We don't have documentation on the age of it.
That's a big assumption.
But from that, we're at least able to identify that it's not any newer than 20, 25 years. And knowing this type of roof system, that is, its typical use, useful life is around that 20, 25-year range. So best case scenario, it's up at its useful life.
So kind of moving way around the building, the next couple of slides here about the exterior walls. I believe we've got two slides for the city hall building. This picture here is taken from the southwest corner of the city hall building, standing in the alley over here. Again, as I said earlier, we believe the exterior wall is structural clay tile and concrete masonry units. We say we believe because there's a thin parge coating, which is a mixture of grout and cement that was applied to the outside face of the building. So we can't actually tell exactly what the units are. But just based on the cracking pattern and such, we're pretty confident it's concrete masonry units. On the south side of the wall, you can see that the parge coating is starting to flake off in many spots. So our recommendation, you know, just based on what we've seen from other areas, you know, deterioration on the east wall of the original building and other areas on this city hall building is to remove a couple four-foot by four-foot sections of the parge coating so that you can make an assessment of what the units, what they're, what they're actually in, or what condition they're actually in, excuse me. This is on the west side of the wall, or the west side of the city hall building. Obviously, it's all brick facade. Approximately 50% of the joints on the, on the west side of the building need to be tuck pointed. Obviously, missing a sill piece there and one of the windows right by the main entrance. There is, in this southwest corner, there's a capstone that's starting to pull away from the wall a little bit. And then on the bottom, the stoop is starting to pull away as well, a little bit. So overall, bricks are in good condition. Just needs a little bit of tuck pointing, which is standard maintenance for this type of exterior wall system.
Just a general question. Does everyone know, when he says tuck pointing, does everyone know what that term means?
No.
All right. So it's essentially the mortar joints in between the brick. When they get old, they start to dry and crack and start to fall away. And at that point, that really, when that starts to deteriorate, can allow a lot more moisture penetration into the wall system. So the tuck pointing is essentially cleaning out that old mortar and grout and replacing it and retooling it and whatnot to allow the water to stay out of the cavity.
So moving on to the city council chamber building. This is for sure concrete masonry unit exterior wall. The north side and portions of the east wall is just painted over top on the exterior. On the west side of the building, there's EFIS, which is an engineered, or exterior insulation finish system that was put over top of the concrete masonry units. And on the south side, there was a, again, that thin parge coating that was added at some point over top of the exterior of the walls. And from what we could see of the actual visible bricks that weren't covered up other than the paint, 75 to 90% of those joints are in need of tuck pointing. There were a number of units that were also soft to the point where I could push a knife into them, up to about a quarter of an inch, which is a pretty significant level of deterioration for a CMU block. So our recommendation would be to remove sections of that outside coating, being the EFIS and the parge coating on the west side, the south side, and then portions of the east side, so that you can actually see what the bricks look like underneath, and we can assess what those look like at that time. And then to go around and, you know, tuck point all over the building and then replace the soft blocks on the north side and the east wall. As they're in pretty, pretty rough condition, many of them. This is a picture of the basement of the city hall building. The north, building A, I believe it was, that was added in 1990s. That's in fantastic condition. There's no concerns with that one whatsoever. The original city hall building, there is a full basement underneath that building. Approximately half of the basement wall there, the concrete is spalling away in many spots. And spalling means that the surface of the concrete is starting to pop and fall away on the inside of the basement. So for overall long-term stability, we believe that, you know, somebody needs to come in and to fix this and keep it from deteriorating further, just apply a shotcrete system or something similar to the inside face of that wall so that it doesn't continue to fall away and deteriorate over time.
So this basement was from 1918 or whatever?
Correct, when the original building was constructed.
1918.
Correct, yep.
I have a question. When you said the police department, so that was in the 90s, right? That's fine, other than the flooding, no, right?
Correct.
There's flooding, but the structural up above, but it does flood down there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So this basement here, what's this need? And this is the only one with a basement, correct?
This, well.
City Hall, my bad.
Yeah, yep, city hall is the only one with a basement.
Okay, and what kind of type of repairs are you recommending over there?
We're recommending a shotcrete type system, which would just be a thin air-applied coating of concrete that would cover the inside face of the entire basement, just to keep that, to protect that surface, right? And to keep it from deteriorating further.
Okay. So I've got down, for repair-wise, new roof or roofs?
Correct. Membrane.
Membrane.
Membrane, yep.
Membrane, but then that needs a new covering, then?
Correct.
Right, with asphalt covering, right?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else there?
For the city hall building? Or, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Could you repeat?
I'm referring to all the buildings, for that matter, but, because it sounds like all the buildings need roof repair of some sort.
Correct, yep. All buildings need a new, new applied roof membrane. Basement would be applying that shotcrete coating in the original building. And then some, likely some replacement of exterior walls in the city hall building. But there would be some, some further destructive investigation that would need to be done to determine if that's necessary or not.
Wouldn't you make the assumption that if you remove some of the soft block, you're going to have to tuck point anything underneath them?
Correct, yep, yep. And in the report, I identified which walls we believe need to be replaced.
All of them?
Not necessarily all of them. There's some that we believe are salvageable. But the majority of the walls in this building in particular, the city chamber building, city council chamber building, excuse me, we believe those are, many of the blocks are in need of replacement.
Over and above tuck pointing.
Correct, yep, where the entire, so tuck pointing is just grinding the joint out and replacing the joint itself. We believe there's, there's blocks in this building that would actually need to be physically taken out and replaced because of the amount of deterioration. That's, that's what we're estimating, yep.
I'm trying to remember, though. Did we, okay, this is our first step. I'm trying to remember what we decided to do. One was just telling us how to stand still. And then step two, part of what we already agreed to was, step two, they would be able to come back and tell us different phases, right? Like if we would decide to either renovate or add on, or, right? Is that what, is that right?
Yeah, task two is, after we get the structural report, to have either renovation, both renovation and/or new here, including a phased approach to both.
Yeah, okay. I guess that's what I'm looking for.
And I'm looking for the cost to do some of these repairs.
Sure.
It's in the report.
Yeah, we unfortunately didn't include it in the slides, but it is in the report, the estimated cost to make these repairs.
Can you give me a ballpark on all of these?
We.
On page what?
I believe that.
Eight hundred and thirty thousand, I think is what we're.
Yep, overall, for both buildings, correct.
For all, for all levels?
Correct. That would get you to the point where your structure is good to build on or to keep moving forward with in the future. And that's generally just structural things and replacing the roof membrane. No, we did not find any bats during our assessment. I don't believe, I didn't, I didn't see any bats.
Christina will never go in the building again.
I did want to clarify, like, just to clarify what Matt had said, the amount that we identified in that report really was structurally. we identified in that report really was structurally focused, so it doesn't include, you know, if you do a remodel, it doesn't include replacing carpets, replacing ceilings or anything like that. It was just the roof and the structural pieces.
And I did discuss with Kevin Hill de Brant, he's our facilities management expert at ISG. We flipped through the pictures and I talked through the building with him, and he noticed also that nearly all of the windows and doors in the City Hall building, they were installed within a wood frame that is rotted and appears to be leaking pretty significantly. There's evidence in the main hallway that goes to the basement of the original City Hall building. The plaster is bubbled pretty severely in many spots, which indicates that there's certainly some water getting into the building somewhere, likely leaking around the windows and such. So, that, that report does not include those costs. This is just what it would take to get the structure to continue on for the next number of years. If you want to flip to the next one, Christina?
I haven't discussed what next.
I guess, I did want to say too, the roof structure in the City Hall building, and I call it the secondary framing in this building, this building being the City Council Chamber Building, we could not see because it was either covered up with plaster or some sort of ceiling, so we couldn't actually see the structure of the roof really in either buildings. We could see the primary structure in this building, which all appeared to be in good condition and no real concerns there. Joshua, will you take next steps?
So, I guess the next steps for this, we kind of talked about them last time, would be, we're going to start on the phase two, which should be the, coming up with some conceptual, looking at some phasing, whether it's a remodel, what it would take to reuse these buildings, a remodel addition, as well as just looking at a, in comparison, if it was using the existing site, new building, just so you guys have cost comparisons, phasing comparisons, kind of all of that. And we have started discussions with the city on just paring down that initial programming phase that we did, was that twenty, a couple of years ago, 2019 or so? But that one was, you know, looking at the 20-year outlook for growth in Brandon, but this one, we're really starting, we're taking a more dialed-in approach to what's, what would be needed, so we can identify, if you're going to do a remodel in here in addition, what would be needed to, you know, get by for the next even five years and whatnot. So, that's the next portion of this.
It's three to five years, you said?
Five, yeah. I don't know if I want to go on record with that. Just kind of throwing a number out there as a ballpark.
I'd like to see five, 10, but that's just me.
Well, I think that's where we're at. I mean, we now know that we have some significant work that needs to be done, and this is, this is going to be an issue that the council's going to have to face. Obviously, at this point, I don't know how much we've had in the capital improvement plan going forward, and the significance of costs that I think you're going to see probably is going to necessitate this being on an agenda when we redo the capital improvement plan. But I think it's a good report. You did a fine job. And, you know, having been involved in a lot of building, furniture store makeovers, they're a challenge. And unfortunately, when you remove stuff, you find more stuff, and I'm afraid that, I can't believe the 1918, 17 building is probably doing pretty good. But at some point, you know, when you have windows, you're talking 50% of the replaced on some walls, some major tuck pointing. I think this is going to be a discussion that needs to be ongoing. But I'm anxious to see phase two. I think that's important, that we get that, and then council, future com, you know, as future meetings can get more involved in that.
Yes. So, phase two, conceptual, correct?
Yep.
Phasing?
Yep.
And cost, those three?
Yep. We will, yep, we'll take all those into consideration.
Yeah, very good. And when will we have that assessment, partner? Any idea?
Well, after this meeting here, I'll talk with Christina, Brian, and the city and identify a schedule for that. I'd say maybe, probably not by next month, but, you know, probably, what, two months, two, two, three months, just given the meeting schedule of the city council.
Christina, when are we planning on doing the CIP list?
Start next month, it'll be May.
How about next month?
All right, we'll work with it.
Any other comments or questions, staff? Any questions, Brian? Christina? Again, I think it's a step. There's going to have to be some hard decisions made, because I think the city is deserving of a facility that we can all be proud of. We've not been a community to do things halfway, and I'm hopeful that we can find a way to not just get by. And I think that's a little bit what we've done, so, thank you.
Christina, a quick question. Do we have a placeholder number in the CIP on any of this at all?
In the CIP, we had City Hall in there, but it was just a, like a number. It wasn't in our five-year plan. So, there's kind of a placeholder, but.
Do you recall what that number is?
Well, that one had to do with our old space needs study, so it was, that was upwards of eight million.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions for the guys? Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, old business. I don't see anything on that. Golf course, hire seasonal staff, if we ever get some seasonal weather for the seasonal staff. Have two young men there?
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second to approve the hiring of seasonal staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You have the Parks and Rec work report in front of you. The next agenda item is miles for mutts at Aspen Park.
Evening, everybody. My name's Jamie Smith. I own Anytime Fitness. Here, just to bring miles to mutts before you, I apologize. I had this approved at a Parks meeting, and it was brought to my attention that it needed to go to council too. So, it is scheduled for this Sunday at Aspen Park. It'll be the fifth annual, so we've been doing it for five years now, and all proceeds go to benefit our local B-Squad dog rescue. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the event.
I think it's a great event. How much do you usually raise?
Yeah, last year, we raised upwards of $10,000 for B-Squad, which they use to fund transports. With them being all volunteer-based, their main job is to go to other states, typically Missouri, or places like that, to rescue dogs that are at risk of being put down if they don't find homes. They then bring them back to Brandon for vetting to make sure that they're healthy, and then they go into volunteers' homes as a foster-based system because they don't have a shelter location, and then they're adopted out to families typically in the local area.
I don't need a motion to approve.
A motion and a second to approve the miles for mutts at Aspen Park. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys. You bet. Thank you.
Next, Parks and Rec has some seasonal staff also.
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second to approve the hiring of seasonal staff at Parks and Rec. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is a request for McCarty Park alcohol consumption permit, Brandon area Jeep Club request.
Motion to approve, mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the one-day McCarty Park permit. Any questions, comments?
Council was invited to this one, right?
Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a well agreement with the Brandon Valley Baseball Association.
Baseball Association would like to drill a well in Aspen Park for their irrigation systems for fields A, B, C, D, and E. Currently, fields A, B, and C are irrigated using city-treated water. Just would take that demand off of the city system and use well water.
Very good.
And they've got their permit from the state.
And a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the well drilling at the baseball diamonds. Any questions?
I have one. I've asked this before, but just to clarify for the video and the audience, this does not affect our water rights permits usage. We're not concerned about it.
No, no. The well is a shallow well in the Big Sioux aquifer, so it's limited to 50 feet deep. Our water source, our primary wells are in the Split Rock, which is 200-plus feet deep, 400 feet deep. We do have one well that we currently use, well number one, that's in the Big Sioux, but it's far enough away that it won't impact it.
And so, this well, I thought I read somewhere where it's going to be two test wells.
In the agreement, we allow up to two test wells. You know, we've got a lot of infrastructure underground in Aspen Park with the electrical system and water mains and water lines. So, we want to make sure that they're, you know, the well driller isn't just digging test wells all over the place, so.
So, they find it on the first one, one zone?
Awesome.
Perfect. So, and this well will be able to irrigate all the fields?
That, hopefully, you know, they'll find a good enough producer.
Assuming.
Assuming they do. We've got three wells in Aspen Park that we don't currently use. They're located along that evergreen tree line on the west side of the parking lot. We stopped using those 20 years ago or so because they were, you know, 50 to 75 gallons a minute. We did our own test wells in Aspen Park five years ago, four or five years ago. Into the Big Sioux aquifer, we found a limited supply, you know, in that 50 to 75 gallon a minute range. So, it can theoretically supply them, but the water's going to take a long time to water. So, they'll set the system on a timer and water.
About that, I'll tell.
No.
Good. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the well agreement with BV Baseball. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public safety, the police report is there, fire department report is there, ambulance report is there. We have a wage adjustment for Austin Peterson.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the wage adjustment for Austin Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second, we have a wage adjustment for Paul Clark.
Please, please, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the wage adjustment for Mr. Clark. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Under administration, the first item is the appointment of Ward Three eldermen. Just make a couple comments. First of all, appreciate the four gentlemen that we interviewed a week ago. It was interesting to hear all of you, and your willingness to step up is certainly appreciated by the city. This is a very difficult decision, you know, and I've thought a lot about this because it's, it's a lot easier to elect probably during an election when you don't always know the faces and how the people are voting is pretty, pretty private. This is not the case here. And so, I, I know the council has probably thought long and hard about this individually, and at this point, we will open the floor up for recommendations and go from there.
Can I say something first? I just want it to be known that as a Ward Three representative, I'm not allowed to vote, so I just want to, I would choose myself, because Lisa, correct me, I don't know what it is, but there's something in state law that, is that correct? That has me where I can't vote, or there's an ordinance or something, right? I just want to make sure.
Yes, I previously expressed that opinion. I didn't know it was going to come up tonight, so I hadn't reviewed my memo, but I did issue that opinion to you before, so you are not able to vote on this.
I just want to make sure the residents know that way.
First of all, I don't know if any of the council has any further questions for any of the candidates. This would be the appropriate time to ask.
Well, I'll go first.
What the heck?
TJ, you've been adamant about your disassociation with some of the negative social media out there. There's a tough one for you, I think. Why does this, some of those Facebook pages say paid for by TJ Cameron?
Thanks, Jack, for asking that, because I definitely want to make this line clear. So, the dirt is the negative affiliated association, which I totally disapprove of that group even existing ever, just to be completely clear. Regarding some other groups, I reached out to all of the other social media groups, including Brandon Ask and Tell, which is our largest platform in the entire city, for members that ask and tell information, and they didn't want to be involved in candidate posts, which was fine, that's a private group, and they made that decision. I also reached out to Tell and Ask, which is the other pretty good-sized, like, resident forum, and asked if they would allow anybody to, you know, either pay for ads or whatever, and they said they'd be open to it, so I engaged and said I would do that. And then there was another group that reached out to me after I asked that group, that was Brandon, for sustainable residence. And to be completely transparent, that one, I was questionable about whether I would want to have my name on that site at all or not. When they reached out, I made the decision that it's best to have my message delivered to as many possible residents as possible, so I can try to influence them in a positive way, should I have won the election. But, to be very clear, one of the admins of that group is Tim Wakefield, and he delivered very negative messages here in our community, and I don't think it was good for anything. I think he's a, I think in his heart, he meant well, but it was the delivery of the message that caused a lot of disruption, and I definitely do not support nor condone that type of messaging here in Brandon. So, thank you, Jack, for asking me that question, because I did reach out to all of the platforms to try to communicate with as many residents as possible, but didn't even ask anything of the dirt, because I wouldn't have wanted my name there, and if they'd have put my name there, I'd have said something about it.
Was Brandon Rants another page that you had paid for advertising on?
Actually, Rants and Raves. I don't think I had to pay for anything for that, but that was affiliated with the Tell and Ask group, so they may have listed me there.
Okay, since we're talking about admins, it's been brought to my attention that the admin of a couple of these groups is somebody that forged the city water report. Is that party that you're dealing with?
No, I did not deal with that individual. And definitely think that that was, I mean, I don't even know how to express my dissatisfaction for that behavior.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and tear the Band-Aid off. First of all, I want to, I want to say that I don't think any of us up here want to, I don't have any questions for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think any of us up here wanted to be put in a position where we have to select the candidate. It's always much, much better if we, if we have an election and the ward in question has the opportunity to pick who's going to represent them. That didn't happen on this case, and it's, there's been other times that it hasn't happened, so it's not necessarily unusual. What I'm going to say personally, and I think, hopefully others agree with this, is that this is, when I go into a booth, I'm voting for people. I'm not necessarily voting against people. There might have been a time or two. But general, general rule is that I vote for the candidate that I think is going to do the best job for the position. And so, I want to kind of make that, that clear, and if others feel that way, I think that they could probably speak up to that. I look for the strengths that they're going to bring, and are they going to be, you know, good service to the ward that they're going to represent? I've looked at all four candidates. I think we've got some excellent candidates that have put in here. I think all four candidates have been successful in what they have done and have contributed to the city and the success of this city. After reviewing everything and making my decision, I have decided on a candidate, and I'm going to make a motion that we approve Colin Steen for this position.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Colin Steen to the We have a motion and a second to appoint Colin Steen to the position of Ward Three. Comments?
Lisa, past boards have stepped, alternative nominations were allowed, some yes, some no. What's your opinion?
Alternative nomination, vote.
We have a, okay, so we have a motion on the floor.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know, that has to be voted on, or die for, yeah, it's going to have to be voted on before another motion can be made. You can try and amend the motion, but I don't know what amendment could be made when we're in this situation.
Thank you. Just needed that clarification before I went on.
Any other comments or questions? Rule call.
Clark?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries, 5-0. Colin Steen is appointed to the Ward Three.
TJ, thank you for your reference.
You're welcome.
Moving on, first reading of ordinance number 654, amending chapter 232 on sale or off sale licenses.
The next two items, ordinance 654 and ordinance 655, deal with the Brandon Farmers Market. They've had their location at the parking lot in front of the Kingburg Coffee for a number of years. They've been very successful. They've outgrown that parking lot. They would like to move to the parking lot at Faith United Church north on Split Rock. One of their vendors sells South Dakota wine. They would like to continue that practice at their proposed new location. So there's a couple of ordinances that need to take place. One is that would allow, we currently, the city does not allow any on or off sale liquor licenses within 100 yards of entrance to a church or school.
Has left the conference.
By the traveled portion, it's, by the, what's it say here? The usual path of travel, it's not as the bird flies. So it's, the parking lot at Faith United is well within that 100 yards. So that's what ordinance 654 does. It allows for the sale of alcohol on the church's property. Ordinance 655 addresses farmers markets and where they can be located as well as off sale liquor. Currently, farmers markets are only allowed in general business, lighter and heavy industrial, and central business. Faith United Church is in an institutional zone. We're trying to get all of the schools, city property, as the churches into an institutional zone. Ordinance 655 would authorize farmers markets in an institutional district as well as would allow the off sale of South Dakota wine at a farmer's market, as long as the church signs off on the application.
And this is the first reading, so there's no...
First reading of both.
Nothing to vote on tonight.
Yep, you need to have approved the first reading.
Oh, okay, I'm sure.
There are some questions at the briefing meeting regarding the, if a vendor was selling with an off sale or on sale liquor license, we've amended that to just be off sale liquor licenses.
Thank you.
How do you see Victoria from Wild Prairie Winery, if you have any questions for her?
I'm Tony, co-owner of the Brandon Farmers Market.
And I'm Victoria Wilde, the owner of Wild Prairie Winery.
So if you have any further questions, feel free to ask.
Unless you brought samples.
I don't think I can here.
Go ahead, Jack.
I wasn't here for briefing, but the sample is what is allowed under state law, if you're going to allow samples. So you don't have to allow samples, but if you do, that's the maximum.
Our samples are... Just so you know, our samples are about a half ounce. They're very small.
But you limit it, how many samples one can consume.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
So what other products do you...
What are the products besides wine? At our winery, we do sell beer. We have a beer license. But we, at the farmer's market, I sell my artwork and wine, and that's it.
Any plans to further develop other distilled spirits or other wines, beers, craft beers, whatever?
We won't make any of the craft beers. We will just get them from other South Dakota breweries. And then we do, we are planning on doing, not us distill, but we have some wine that we're going to have distilled. I'm not planning on selling that at the farmer's market, and that's still probably a couple of years away.
Okay, but under this proposal, you could do that, correct?
South Dakota wine.
Wine only.
How is that classified as opposed to, she's potentially going to do in the future?
There's distilled spirits, there's beer, and there's wine under the liquor licenses. So right now, we're only allowing the wine under the revision. If you wanted to expand that, then we'd need to modify that.
And actually, I do not have any plans on doing that for quite a while, if I even did it. I'd probably just stick to the wine at the farmer's market.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would move to approve.
654?
One at a time.
One at a time. Well, I'll start with 654 in a second.
A motion and a second to approve the first reading of ordinance 654. Any other comments or questions?
I'm just going to go on the record. I still don't feel comfortable with this. Called me old school. Just, I know that the church is fine with it. I just, I just don't like the fact that it's in a church parking lot and a school that we're changing everything for, where, you know, you can get the wine at Sunshine or some other place. I don't know. That's just my, I just feel uncomfortable with that, so. Voting against it.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm, I can't, I can't vote for something that I don't know what the residual effect will be, months, weeks, five weeks, months, a year or two from now. Because I know things can change. Your plans could change very quickly depending on the market. And so, I can't, I can't move forward with a, with a yay vote.
Any other comments? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. First reading of ordinance 655, amending chapter 638, this is the farmer's market permit.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve ordinance 655. Any other questions, comments?
I'll do a rule call.
Thank you.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Motion carries. Okay. Number four is resolution number 1322, approving a revised joint cooperative agreement establishing CICOG. I understand we have another member joining?
Yes, we have another first-class city T, which is an automatic member of the CICOG board. CICOG is Southeast Council of Governments. They're a regional government entity that assists nine counties, I can't remember how many communities. There's 21 members of that board. They don't want to enlarge their board, so what they're proposing, or what this resolution will approve, is increasing the first-class cities by one and decreasing the private representatives by one, from eight to seven. The CICOG executive board approved the change at their meeting.
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second to approve a resolution 1322. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have on the agenda a resolution, talking about communication.
I had brought this forward. I'm basically just proposing that we have an ongoing agenda item. Under administration is fine to talk about communication. It's been an issue that's come up a lot over the years, to the point where we had a communications plan that we invested in a few years ago. The issue at that time was that we were a lot more short-staffed than we are now. So I think it's a great opportunity for us to do some collaborating and brainstorming. I went back through that communications plan, and it's surprising how much has changed in, in the few years since we have done that. But one thing that really stood out to me in that plan was that council was to help shape the vision for our communication, and I think that's very indicative of our roles. You know, we are representatives of the residents, and we hear a lot, and I think we can help bring forward some of those topics and work on communication as a whole. I've always thought that if, if one person is asking us a question, there's, there's probably 10 or 100 or 1,000 more that have that same question. So just kind of making it more of a priority to get back into building the confidence with our residents and being more proactive.
Well...
And I'll just piggyback, this is not at all to deter what we're doing, or change what we're doing, or control what we're doing. It's just to supplement that.
So from what I understand, you just want to put it on there, so if something, if a resident comes to us, or if we think of something like, oh, yeah, maybe that should be posted either through textedly or on our city page. Is that what you're saying? And sometimes we might not even talk about anything.
Yeah.
It's just there. Okay.
Yeah, it may just be glanced over as a work report at some meetings. At other meetings, it might be, one person brings something forward, and it's very limited, and everybody thinks it's been covered. It just gives us an opportunity to collaborate. More heads are better than one.
I like the idea. Just as a placeholder, it gives us and staff an opportunity to say, here's what we, as a council, think needs to be communicated this week, let's say, or soon, or when, when it's available. And it's also, I think it's an opportunity to, for staff, to say, here's what we've got coming up. Would you like to see a specific communication? And if so, of what, what type? Is it through textedly, is it Facebook? Is it letters? What, what, what could it be? And maybe it's all of the above. So I'll, I'll just start out with a possible communication to the city, or maybe it's a question first. Tammy, I think you do the text updates for the core. Okay, how often do you do those? Or as needed, or what's your goals?
For the most part, they're as needed. Like today, they had to fix a water service line that wasn't expected. So obviously, that one goes out right away once they notify me that they're going to shut the water off. I've been trying to send something out every couple of days, or like Friday afternoon, I put one out because they were removing the street this morning. So just another reminder for them to remove their vehicles from the streets and make sure they're out of their driveway early this morning.
I think any and all of those are excellent. And I think, from what I've heard, people just want to be informed as to what's going on, what they can expect in the next few days, especially. So keep up that for sure.
We also, we also did the door hangers for removing streets. We do that about 24 hours in advance, and if we have a planned water shut-off, we do the door hangers as well. And then we do update the website as much as possible. So there's usually construction updates on there, too.
Is there a specific, and I think, I think the answer is yes, but a specific text that goes out to core, just core? And they need to sign up for that?
Yes.
And what kind of response rate would you say you got on that, of the people in there, in the core area? I'm curious more than anything.
I don't remember what our exact, exact numbers are for the core area, but a lot of people signed up in the first phase as well. So if they stay signed up, then they get all the updates for the second phase as well. We did a mailing, and quite a few people signed up after that, because we put a little insert in there on that. And then if they come to the open house, we make sure to point that out, too, that they should sign up for it. It is our main way of communication when something comes up.
Okay. What, what do you got planned for this week, then? Any ideas?
Mostly just street removal.
All right. So that's, in my opinion, that's what this agenda item can do. And I'd encourage you all to have some, you know, a suggestion for them, and, you know, and you provide us with something as well. That's my idea, but I'll, so...
Yeah, because I believe, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm almost positive. Christina, did you put something on Facebook, on the city site about the tree removal, and that's coming up? I thought I saw something, or was that my bill? I can't remember. But like, stuff like that, I think is good, and it's, you know, like, you guys already do that stuff, but just to remind us, hey, because I know I saw it somewhere, but I forgot, you know, so if a resident reaches out. Did you do something like that? Is that right?
Yeah, I think Devin did it.
Devin did it?
A little while back.
Good job, Devin. I knew I saw it somewhere, but I liked those.
Recently on the phase three of the water meter replacement, too.
Yeah. Yeah, I like that.
Do we need a motion to add this as a placeholder?
That's a good idea.
Yep. Communication is always good, and I think the key is regular. If we can continue to just be on a regular basis rather than a sometime basis, that's good. Next on the agenda is Encore Park Assignment and Assumption Agreement of Railroad Crossing Licenses.
This is an agreement between the City of Brandon, Encore Park, and Allison Eastern Railroad. Encore Park is putting in some utilities and a crossing, and then once they're constructed, then the City of Brandon would take those over.
Say, Tammy, I noticed on the plans, and this is just the old railroad man and me, are they doing a rubber crossing as opposed to concrete?
Yes, and that's not the request of the railroad. That's what they preferred.
The railroad did?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'd have to those guys. That's odd.
Things have changed since you retired, Jack.
I get, no, this is going back 30 years to rubber crossings instead of concrete, so...
Okay.
Interesting. Thank you.
So we'd need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Come on.
Sorry, Rover. Okay, you do it, and I'll make a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of agreement. Thank you.
Mr. Railroad has a motion that we approve.
Yeah.
Maybe you wanted that as you last arrived.
Exactly.
There you go. Are there any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Tax abatements on page 165.
Two tax abatements recommended from the county for property owned by the Brandon Revolving Loan Fund up in the, up in the industrial park. Yep.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the tax abatements, 2022 0131 and 0130. All. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Streets, we have a work report, core area overlay bids.
We bid out our overlay project. We had five bidders. They ranged from a little under $200,000 all the way up to $372,000. We did put in the budget in our street maintenance fund about $400,000 for this project. It was the estimate of it to be about that $350,000. So if you look in your packet at the map, that's on page 172, those overlays were on Fifth Avenue, Sixth Avenue, Conifer Street, and then one block of Elm that would not be constructed with this year's Phase II A project.
So that's the brown?
Yes, yep. Since we got really good bids, I'm proposing that we add in the green streets that are on that map, which would be Seventh Avenue and Cedar Street, all the way from Fourth Avenue to Split Rock. That would put us right under that $400,000, and then if budget allowed for, I'd like to pick up Fleetwood Circle as well.
You don't have to rebid that?
No, nope, we can add that in because it's the same type of work.
Just adding one regular.
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Maybe a motion and a second to approve the overlay project with the great bid to do, I know Cedar really needs it, and maybe they all do. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We have, the next item is a wage adjustment for Raleigh Hokey.
We should approve.
Boy, Raleigh, everybody wants you to. We have a motion, a second to approve the wage adjustment for Mr. Hokey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we do appreciate a great deal of the work that you do. Next is the sidewalk locations, and I guess the resident that wanted to at least park in the driveway, is that, it seems like a reasonable request, is that, can we make that happen? For everyone?
No.
No?
Just so you know, on that particular one, I went up there with my handy-dandy Stanley tape measure, and it would appear from my calculation, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there would probably be from the garage out about 21, 22 feet for parking on that particular, which is wide enough to, or long enough to park a vehicle up to a pickup truck without blocking the sidewalk.
Correct. It's just really close to our garage. She'd have to pull her vehicle right up to our garage, yep.
What about on the other corner where she was talking about she cannot?
Right. So when Melanie Morford was here at the last meeting, she spoke about it. She did text me that her meeting was going late, so she might not make it tonight. I'm not sure that anywhere you put the sidewalk along her street, that she would be able to park a vehicle between her garage and the sidewalk without overhanging onto that sidewalk, just because those garages are really close to the street.
What street is that?
Conifer. Cedar, Cedar.
Cedar?
Cedar. By Main.
Cedar.
Yep.
Ideally, we want these to be, what again, is it 10, what is it, 10 and 1/2?
So within the core phase, the core phases, we are placing sidewalks two feet from the property line or that right-of-way line. That leaves most of the project with a boulevard width of 10 and 1/2 feet.
Is that what we do for new construction, or what do we do for new construction?
For new construction, we've been doing one foot off of the property line. So the two feet really helps when there's already existing fences and utilities and that sort of thing out there, that we can try to stay away from that a little bit more.
I know there was a concern to be inconsistent, and I agree, I think, especially when we have new development and to getting something consistent throughout, but I really think we need to be innovative and kind of think outside the box when it's an existing residential area, and try to do what we can to work the most with the citizen. I know we can't please everyone, but I understand with the standards that we, we like to have those, but I feel like if it works for majority of people, I think we should be a little bit flexible in understanding that there once was no sidewalks, now there are sidewalks. Is there anything that we can be a little bit, you know, helpful or considerate of those that have been living there? I mean, I don't know, those are my thoughts, but I understand going forward with other stuff, we need to have those consistency, but I don't know how everyone else feels, but those are my thoughts.
While you're doing that, I'll make a couple of comments. Unfortunately, the sidewalk on Cedar, or the driveway on Cedar, from what I could tell, it looks like that's the one that probably should have been extended. One of them needs to be, have an additional length so you could actually park a vehicle in there. Dave, I'm not sure your tape measure, I don't know, maybe cut off a nip or two, but visually, to me, it looked a little short there for the one on Second, but I don't know, I think we need to be somewhat accommodating here because now she's going to have two short driveways instead of one. And that, to me, that's going a little, she would be giving up more than her fair share. So I would like to see us, what's now proposed is only five foot.
Right now, the boulevard width is 10 and 1/2 foot.
Okay, but from the sidewalk to?
From the back of the curb to the sidewalk.
What happened by Elm Street?
Elm Street, what did it happen?
Elm Street.
Second.
And that's how some corner right there?
Second and two, and there's another driveway on those trees?
Right.
Laser pointer, come on!
Just keep in mind, this is already designed, construction is started, you know, if you're going to start changing things, that could be additional fees or design fees on those.
What happened in the first phase, I mean, did we have to stop and have everything redesigned? Because like all over, just driving down Main, it's like kind of normal width and then crazy wide width, and then over on First Street, back behind City Hall here, it's like, I don't know, a couple feet. It's, I mean, there's already a lot of inconsistency, so I'm just wondering, what does that look? What did it look like when we did that face and had to change things for slope or elevation or whatever caused us to do that?
So with the sidewalks, you know, there are some constraints. We have to make sure we're meeting ADA compliance. In that first phase, there is a little bit more elevation change, you know, we have some hills going up to Main, that sort of thing. And then we also have some driveways that were pretty steep. And so what we did was we kind of worked with each homeowner as much as possible to kind of put that sidewalk where it still met ADA requirements, but then it also was more of a minimal impact on the slope of their driveway because the sidewalk that goes through their driveway needs to be pretty flat. It's only able to have about a 2% cross-slope on it. Some of those had to move closer out to the street, and so some of them were only, you know, four or five feet from the back of the curb versus others along Main, which had a much larger right-of-way. Some of those are more than 10 feet. So there was some going back and forth, and not all of them would have to be redesigned, but there were a couple where we had to go back and do some more survey and look at some driveways, just to make sure that it was constructable on where we wanted to put it and if it worked with the plans.
Are those significant costs, or are I just kind of clueless on what we're biting off here if we look at that?
Depends on how many we need to do, number one. Number two, the sidewalk on First Street north of Elm, just north of City Hall, the engineers were aware of that issue during design, so they took that into account. It wasn't an after-the-fact item. They knew that there was a tight, tight thing with those driveways, they're fairly steep driveways, the houses are very close to the property line or the street, so they were aware of that during design.
And did they do anything?
Yeah, they moved the sidewalk out because the driveways are too steep, you can't meet ADA requirements.
The boulevards are really narrow.
Yes.
What are those widths?
I mean, they vary a little bit. A lot of it is kind of in this older area of town too. Some of the right-of-ways change as well. So even if you go over like to the Rushmore area that we did last year, those boulevards are really small, they're probably only two or three feet, which makes snow removal challenging as well. It's nice to have a little bit of space there so you can put some snow. Also, like fire hydrants and utilities need to go back behind there. So there's some challenges either way.
But we still got to, I mean, you got to be able to park your car in your driveway. I don't think that's unreasonable. I don't have a solution if we have to change it, but you can't. I mean, I don't know if that, if the school necessarily affects off-street parking in that area, maybe some, but.
It doesn't, it's an elementary school.
Yeah, I would, that's why I say I don't know that it affects it, but I, I don't know.
We can accommodate every and all requests, but I think we can accommodate some. This is one of the better examples of where we should be able to make some compromises. And I'm not sure what the night rent proposal number is, you know, distance, and because if I say five feet, it should have been four or six because of a tree or utility or something. So I would say just try to go out and have yourself and/or the contractors work with the gal and try to get a little extra space for it. That's my only request.
We can take a look at it, but if you look on Cedar, one of the areas of concern, on the north side of Cedar, there is no place that we can put a sidewalk that doesn't interfere with parking on the north side of Cedar. If you look at the picture right there.
I haven't pulled up.
There's no way that we can make that accommodation.
You know, looking at these pictures, they're already parking in the easement as it is, correct?
Correct.
I mean, I'm not really sure why or when that was built, but why they built it that close to the property line is, I don't know why they did that.
Those are all three detached garages.
Yeah, I know, but still, I don't know why they put them that far.
If you look on the south side of Cedar, you can see cars currently, and this is the vast majority of properties. They can all park in their driveway.
Yes.
And they're still going to be at least two feet away from the sidewalk.
But they're right up to their garage door. That's the problem to.
But.
When the sidewalk's not on the red line, it's two feet behind the, how are we going to?
And they're not right up to their garage door because typically, there's probably a two-plus-foot overhang on their roof before it gets to their garage.
Well, and wouldn't you say it's because the one side of Cedar was built much later than the other side of Cedar?
I would think so.
Standards changed.
The north side of Cedar was probably built.
You get a ticket for that?
Back in the 40s, 50s, when we were not a city, it was under county zoning right at the time. Most of the houses on the south side of Cedar, I would think, were built in the 70s.
So my assumption, Brian, would be if they, if we put it where it presently is, and they park in the driveway, their vehicle will hang out over the sidewalk.
On the north side of Cedar? Oh yeah, they'll be parked in.
No, I'm talking more about the Elm and Second.
Elm and Second?
The lady that was just here, wasn't she?
If you take a look.
So is this just Cedar and Second that this is affecting mostly, or is it also, First is done, right? No?
I think we're really going on Second, there were some people.
Well, she said.
There's a block of First here, that's not.
She said one of her streets was done last year.
Yep, Elm is done. Elm is.
She already, can't park there. And I understand you can't zigzag the sidewalk just to make everyone fit everyone, I understand that, but I sort of would be with Jack that I think we at least need to take another look at and see if there's an alternative before we do it, but.
If you can accommodate the majority, or, yeah. So Christina, you're saying it's like two feet, yep, from here, the sidewalk would be, right? Or likewise, like the other one? Okay. So where that red line is, it's not necessarily that's where the sidewalk is, it's two feet off of that?
Correct.
Right? Okay.
Well, counsel, what do you wish to do?
You know, this is interesting because, you know, we sit on P and Z and have communities that were built with standards that don't exist today. And so you often run into troubles whenever you have an older community that, especially if you look at Cedar, that's a prime example of a neighborhood that was built much before any regulations were put in place. The south side of Cedar was obviously built after we were paying a little more attention to things like driveway lengths and where houses sat and setbacks and whatnot. I would guess before it was like, they probably said, yeah, looks good, put it there. And unfortunately, when you try to rebuild those areas, you have to deal with a lot of those difficulties. I don't know, because even if you were to put the sidewalk right behind the curb on the north side of Cedar, they still cannot park a car in their driveway. I mean, they currently aren't really parking on their property now. Because if you look at the red line, the red line is where their property is. So they've been, for the last, since 1940, been parking on basically city property anyway. So I don't know what the solution exactly is, except for that it's very challenging dealing with older neighborhoods, as I do know.
Well, now you're going to have a sidewalk that people can walk on, right now they don't. It's not impacting anything, but it will impact it if they park in their dri, and I guess on Cedar, there's probably not much you can do.
On the section over that was done on Rushmore recently, what are those dimensions or setbacks or widths?
Those kind of varied also from about eight foot to 10 foot.
All those houses sit quite a bit off the street for the most part.
Most of the right-of-way was very.
Yeah.
Right.
Problem is, you started with one, and how do you determine that? I mean, we have, we've had more than, even in Core Phase 1, we had complaints on that, and we did that, and we've had other complaints on here, and we've just kept it consistent in two feet off the property line. So if you have one, how are we supposed to determine on who gets that change and who doesn't get that change?
Counsel, make a decision. Do you want to have them relook at it, or do we want to?
I will, so we're actually going to shrink the street also by two feet on each side, right?
Correct. Well, one foot on each side.
One foot on each side? That doesn't gain us a whole lot of room, does it?
Jack, you've kind of thrown out that five foot for a boulevard width. I wouldn't say for constructability purposes, we'd want that to be at least six feet, just so that we can get a skid loader in there and that sort of thing for backfilling and putting in forms and working in that boulevard width.
All right, so we need to compromise, four foot, five foot, let's go four and a half. And keep the conversation moving. I would recommend, instead of picking an arbitrary number right now when you don't know the exact dimensions, let the engineers take another look at it.
I would agree.
I'd move with that for sure.
Let's move on with that and ask staff to have the engineers take another look.
So they're going to look at just the one side of Cedar, not the other? I would assume, because they wouldn't really have to.
Cedar, the south side of Cedar is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. The north side of Cedar, there is absolutely nothing you can do.
Right.
To locate a sidewalk that they will not have to park on.
But we could give them a look. And even on Second?
That's what you're facing here.
I know.
There's no way you can put a sidewalk.
I used to live on Cedar, I know that house pretty well.
And so on Second Avenue, it would just be on one side of the street or both sides of Second Avenue?
How about we look at the whole project area?
Okay, beautiful. Thank you.
Okay. Next, water and sewer, the water treatment plant bids. Tammy?
We opened bids on the 11th of April, if I remember correctly. We received two bids, one from Stanic Construction, which is the low bid. The base bid was $24,973,800, and that included RO, reverse osmosis. The bid alternate was a deduct of $8,030,000 if reverse osmosis was not.
The bid alternate was a deduct of $8,030,000 if reverse osmosis was not included in the bid. If you didn't want to do a reverse osmosis.
Brian, can you run that by me one more time?
Sure.
Low salary.
Yep, base bid was $24,973,800. And that includes the installation of the reverse osmosis system.
Nine million?
Twenty-four mil- twenty-four million, nine hundred seventy-three thousand...
Round numbers, please.
Twenty-five million.
Twenty-five million.
Twenty-five million.
Okay, thank you.
With a deduct if the city chooses not to install the RO system of eight million.
Eight, thank you.
So without the RO, you're looking at seventeen million for the treatment plant.
Twenty-five or seventeen, basically.
Yep, and then on page 177, we've summarized in a spreadsheet estimated costs for the surcharge, monthly surcharge based upon meter size. We have two funding alternatives. One's a 20-year bond, one's a 30-year bond. At this point in time, staff is recommending a 30, even though it just hurts me to do that. But for cash flow purposes, we think the 30 is probably the way to go. So the difference, we've broken this down with and without grant funding as well. For instance, the search monthly surcharge for a typical residential customer who has a one-inch meter or smaller with the RO system is going to be $25.63. Without the RO system, it's going to be $17.62. When we first started looking at this two years ago, there were no grant funds available, so that's the, the two columns on the right. We were looking at an expansion with an RO of about 35.53 and expansion only of 24.37. So we wanted to quantify what that grant funding would be. If you choose the RO system, our grant funding would be approximately seven million, about seven and a half million. And if you choose the bid alternate without the RO system, I think we're down about five, 5.1, 5.5 million grant. So there's...
Seven million grant with RO?
Correct.
About five million without.
Yep. Yeah, I saw him get up and I started talking.
Okay, you gentlemen, been waiting very patient.
Ben Jolson with the A2S. Glad to have a chance to talk to everyone here again. It's been a little while. As Brian mentioned, we've got bids open in hand. Next comes a decision of whether or not to build the RO. As was previously decided, excuse me, the project was designed and bid to allow the opportunity to decide if RO should be built now or later. And with that design, it allows it to be built in the future as well. Softening in general, I just wanted to point out, it's not an uncommon treatment process in the region. To point out some other systems, Sioux Falls softens their water. Getting out to other systems, Minnehaw, raw water softens, Lewis and Clark softens, going even farther, Yankton softens, going north, Brookings, Watertown, they all soften. A lot of communities, it's, it's pretty common for communities of Brandon size or larger in this region to include some sort of softening process, unless their water is naturally softer. Pier is one of those. They're building a new plant now, taking water from the Missouri River. Their water's naturally softer than Brandon's well, raw water. They opted not to soften any further, but like I said, they're, they're naturally quite a bit softer. The softening itself, I want to point out that the reason that's fairly common is the benefits it provides. One thing is, as you soften your water or reduce your hardness in your water, you'll notice your fixtures, your appliances don't build up scaling on them as fast. So your fixtures and appliances are lasting longer. The, the processes in the plant are a little different than what you see through a water softener in your home. Yes, your water softener home does soften the water. Typically, that water softener is only on your hot water system. For one, if you softened all your water, you'd be paying for the salt that goes in your softener or everything, all the water you're using. And a lot of that comes down to aesthetics. That softer water feels better when washing your hands, when taking a shower. On the other hand, usually that water softener in your home isn't on your cold water side, because that's a type of ion exchange water softener. It's removing the calcium/magnesium ions, replacing them with sodium from the salt. You typically don't want to drink that. You know, if you're watering your lawn, you don't want to necessarily put a lot of that out on your lawn in combination of paying for the extra salt just to go out on your yard. So there's, there's differences there. The softening in a treatment plant removes those hardness ions, those calcium/magnesium ions, without replacing them with something, let's say detrimental, or something like your home water softener does. So it's in essence removing those hardness items without adding anything back in. An RO process removes a lot, most of everything from, all suspended solids, dissolved solids, from the treated water, which is why we only have a portion of the water going through the RO system. Half the water's gonna go through, half the water will bypass. So we're not supplying pure RO water to the city, for one, that'd be expensive. For another, minerals do have their benefits to be left in the water as well. Looking at the softening salt used in a home, we ran through, and I mentioned this, I believe, in one of my previous presentations, an estimate on even if each household wants to keep their water softener, the water softened at the plant going to the home will be softer in general. So water softeners would have to be adjusted. There's input range. You can put what your hardness is and grains coming in and what your target is you want coming out. So you'd see a reduction, even if you want to keep your water softener, a reduction in that salt, salt usage at your home. Based on reducing the water plant's water hardness by half, we estimated every household that would still continue to use their water softener would see about a bag of salt reduction in usage per month. That doesn't sound significant, but for anyone who doesn't like carrying in bags of salt routinely, every bag less seems a little exciting as well. There's environmental benefits to that as well. With that assumption of a bag less per, of salt per household, if we take into account through that softening process, those water, home water softeners go through a regeneration process. As they regenerate, they use up water in that process, too, that, that's just dumped to sewer through that regeneration process. The salt then, through that generation process, gets discharged to the sewer as well. That salt goes to the wastewater treatment plant. That is not targeted in the wastewater treatment plant removal, so it goes through the plant and into the river through the discharge. Using those, those numbers, a bag of salt per household, it's estimated that that ends up being from the city Brandon, about a 300-ton reduction in total dissolved solids from that salt discharge by softening the water at the plant instead of at every home. Again, I want to point out, that's not assuming every household removes their water softeners. That's just assuming everyone accounts for their water softener with a, with a softer water coming in. Another benefit of reverse osmosis is it provides that extra barrier for radium removal. The plant itself already targets radium removal in the front-end processes through their aeration and filtration processes. But any residual amount or small amount that gets through RO would remove that through that portion of water going through the RO process as well. I want to point out just on M costs, this is a high-level look at costs that was done during the facility plan, just to show that there are added costs, operational costs with the RO process.
I just want to know, when you guys did the water rate study, you had anticipated that, and I have continued to anticipate that. So when I do the water rate study, it is anticipated that that O and M cost is gonna increase in 2024. So the rates are, are steady. I don't see any substantial increases in rates because of that. It would just be inflation rates increases.
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to point out that it's, it's typical with, if you add a treatment process, you're gonna add added treatment costs. There's no surprises there. With these costs, there are largely power and chemical costs with the RO process. There's some chemicals that get put in front of the RO to make sure those membranes are maintained while it's operating and you're condensing everything down that's removed with that process. And then there are cleaning chemicals. Excuse me. We, we had assumed two cleanings per year with these chemical costs. There's a really good chance we may only end up having to clean once a year. It largely depends on the operation, you know, the number of hours on those membranes per year. There's a lot of factors that go into, to affect the cost for each system and how often they get cleaned. But typically groundwater systems are far less frequently cleaned than surface water systems through RO, just because it's better water.
Maintenance, is there a lot more daily maintenance, or is that about the same as what we would see now at the plant itself?
As far as daily maintenance, yeah, there's, with another process, there's other parameters that have to get looked at on a day-to-day basis. You know, the operators will be used to looking at a screen of certain parameters, making sure they're in the acceptable or normal range. This would add, you know, another screen or some more items that they just look at to make sure it's operating still in those same ranges. The plant is planned to operate similar to what it does now, in an automated turn-on and turn-off process on its own. So it's, it's not expected that it has to be staffed every time the plant's running right now. Eventually, Brandon will get to that point when the water plant runs 24 hours a day, but it's, it's not at this time. It's, it's planned to be controlled and operated typically how the plant does now. Alarms and parameters will be set up, so if something happens, they get notified through any alarming system, just like they do now.
What's the water loss if we do the RO?
The loss through the concentrate you're speaking, through the portion of water going through the RO, it's 25% gets, gets discharged as concentrate. So with half of that water bypassing the RO, as a plant as a whole, it's 12 and a half percent.
I know Sioux Falls, you said, has water softening, but it's not RO.
Nope.
So what else communities have RO specifically?
Nearby Yankton is the only one off the top of my head.
Okay.
They put it in a few or handful of years ago.
So I actually toured that Yankton plant, and they use RO because they are eliminating a lot more than radium from their water, from my understanding. And it does a good job of that, correct?
Yeah.
I do have a question. So the way we currently treat our water, I know former councils and some other people had talked about water, had always talked about us trying to get from another source and then blend it with our water. It's my understanding that the way we treat it and the way those other sources treat it, blending probably wouldn't have gone very well.
There's, there's always hurdles, if you want to call them that, when blending water. You can't just look at one parameter. You can end up blending water and causing things to precipitate or settle out, solids that you don't expect. Largely blending from, from, we looked at nearby systems, just getting water from the start. Lewis and Clark was one option. They didn't have any allocated that they could give to us or give to, allocate to Brandon, looked at getting it through Minnehaw County Raw Water. Originally, they, they had mentioned an op, a short-term option. Not committing a short term, but they wouldn't commit to a long-term option.
Well, that's good.
They ended up
They can't now.
allocating that, yeah, finding another use for that. So then that, that option even disappeared, even on a short-term basis. And you wouldn't want to install that infrastructure without a long-term commitment, you know?
Could, could you blend other water with RO, like 20, 30 years down the line, if we had to, or no?
Yeah, there's, just like the plant is planned to do now, with half the water being RO and half the water being bypassed around, though, just filtered water. You, you have options of blending down the road. It would just need to be looked at what the water quality is you're looking at blending with, with the Brandon water. And, you know, a lot of that can be done with bench stop testing to see what parameters need to be considered as far as blending ratios or any additional chemical treatment or, or pH ranges, stuff like that.
Okay. Also, I, I wasn't a railroad guy, but I did use to make fixtures for 15 years. And I can tell you, the city Brandon water ruined most of them. It destroys caulk lines, it destroys grout lines, it destroys fixtures, faucets. I mean, it's so hard that the calcium builds up on them and it basically ruins appliances. It, it's, it's pretty bad. Now, unfortunately, people assume that hard water is bad water. It's not necessarily bad water. It's not healthy water. It's just simply hard water, correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, from a health standpoint, no, it's, it's not necessarily detrimental to your health.
But it is detrimental to appliances, fixtures, basically everything in people's houses and businesses.
Yep. Exactly, for what, what you're saying. It's, it scales up on them. Anywhere there's any type of evaporation, which is in your appliances, on the ends of fixtures, you get that buildup. And this, I want to point out, we're, we're not removing all of the hardness. So there's still potential for calcium and magnesium buildup. But by removing half the hardness, it slows that process down significantly.
When you mentioned blending, you said with our filtered water, would that still be chlorine-treated water?
Yeah, absolutely. For the drinking water going out to the plant, the chlorination will remain the same, pH targets will remain the same. The main difference is that you're gonna see hardness reduction. That's really the, the main significant difference. You're gonna see all of the parameters were targeting the same water quality range going out of the plant.
Okay, you mentioned pH. I've read some stuff that has talked about acidic levels or pH levels. I mean, what, what does that entail?
It, it gets into kind of the stability of the water or the corrosivity of the water. Brandon right now runs at about a seven, off the top of my head, 7.8 pH, which is right at the neutral zone. Some communities run all the way up to nine pH, more of the alkaline range. Just, just based on preference and what they see as, as benefits for stability of that water system. With, with the addition of RO, RO itself, removing everything from water, actually drops the pH on the RO water that will permeate coming out of the RO system. So that gets into some of the additional chemical costs, with that chemical back to raise the pH back into that normal range.
How many residents, this is a tough question, would you anticipate would no longer need their softener? Because I've had some people that are under the impression that if we go to RO water, they don't need their softener anymore. But that may not be the case. Do you have any idea how many residents only, I mean, what percentage of households only use a bag a month? Or, I mean, how many people are gonna really be able to just like...
It really comes down to preference. Just to give you a quick example of myself, previously I'd lived up in Fargo area, and our water hardness there was around 120 milligrams per liter. We're target, gonna be targeting 200 milligrams per liter at the plant, which is half of the 400 in the raw water. When we moved down, I'm on the Minnehaw Raw Water System. One of the first thing I looked at, just because I'm in business, was what the water quality was like. We saw those right on the 200 milligrams per liter. My wife initially thought, okay, we're gonna have to put a water softener house, because the house we looked at didn't have one. I was able to convince her, let's hold off. It's not a project I would want to jump into right away. Wait a couple of months. Even, I thought we would notice a significant difference just from jumping from 120 milligrams per liter to 200. We didn't see a significant difference, if any, to add a water softener to the house. So we've opted not to put one in. That is our personal preference on there. So it really comes down, some people might be running their water softeners to where they're getting extremely softer water. And in that case, they're still gonna use their water softener. They'll just use less salt because they'll have softer water going into the softener. It won't have to soften as far down. So it's, I, I couldn't even guess it. The question, if, if a lot of the cities like myself, you could see a lot of softeners get removed or taken out. But it, it comes down to preference.
Okay. And I was making another note when we were talking about, so the, the rate that gets wasted, I heard 25 and 12 and a half. So, so which, just the RO water, you're saying there's 25% waste?
Yeah, it's for the, the way the system's sized, it's got 75% recovery. So 25% is the concentrate. As, as you concentrate it down more and more, it gets harder and harder to getting more water out of there. Pressure's increases, pump force power's increases, potential for scaling or fouling of the membranes increases. So it's, it's really a typical range that 75%, I would say 70 to 80%. And that's, I don't like to necessarily consider wasted water, because it's, it's more of a byproduct, because you, that's the water that's carrying all the stuff you want to remove out of it. If you compare it to a lime process, you're adding lime to soften. Now you've got the sludge and the de-watering that you need to handle. That's the by-product of softening. That still includes moisture in it. Granted, it's not the, not the volume. But that's, I'd consider more of a byproduct than waste. But it's water that's not going in the distribution system, but is coming out of the well, yes.
Okay, and speaking of the, the waste or, or the extra... And speaking of the, the waste or, or the extra, I remember in a previous meeting talking about needing a permit for discharging.
Yep.
Where are we at with that or what does that look like?
That, the state said they wanted, they don't want to start that until the construction project is awarded and moving forward. So as soon as we award the project or we, or we know we're moving forward with RO, we'd start that communication with the state. You know, with any discharge permit, they, they take a little bit of time. But we've got a little over two-year construction window, so they may not even want to start it right away. Because those permits are issued usually for a duration of time and then you got to renew them. So, but those communications would start with the state right away.
Seems backwards. So we have to construct and then ask for permission?
Right, because they, they, not necessarily permission. We've, we've got it all approved through the water quality and through the pilot study. The discharge water quality samples, that they have no concerns with the discharge, issuing the discharge permit. They just don't want to issue a permit if, if the project may not even be there, you know? They haven't necessarily approved the permit. They've approved the water quality and are ready to, for us to move forward with the permit application.
So if we didn't get the permit, what would happen? Or if we didn't get it renewed at some point in the future, what's that mean?
Well, then you can discharge to the river.
What would our alternative be?
That is the only alternative now. It's, it's real similar to like a wastewater plant, discharging the river. If suddenly their permit got canceled, it'd be in a world of hurt because they had nowhere else to go with that discharge. No, it's totally fine.
So I served on the water committee when we formed that. And there was a lot of comments about, well, why didn't Brandon hook up to MCW, MC, the Minnehaha County or Lewis and Clark? And those folks back 20 years had no idea that we were going to grow like we did. And, and they made the right decision at that time. And I bring that up because I think 20 years from now, people are going to say about this council, if we don't take advantage of this opportunity, we've really missed the boat. And so I would encourage us to strongly look at the RO system.
I've got just one question that has come up. You said RO is used in Yankton?
Yep.
Are there other places in South Dakota that RO is used? How common is RO versus lime softening in the industry?
Lime softening is more common in current plants. Because it was around first and it was around quite a bit longer before RO became more possible or more popular, more feasible. Membranes or that type of technology took a little while to get cost-effective and gain popularity. So as far as installed system, lime softening's more common, I would say, probably, probably by far right now. Systems going in, RO is getting considered more and more often. There's operational complexity differences. Our lime softening is a chemical treatment process. You go through a softening basin. If, if there's upsets, you got time, usually hours, to try and regain control of that treatment process. RO is more of a mechanical process. If there's an issue, say there's a failure or pressure problem, it can shut off, you shut it off. And then you either switch skids or you can fix what's on that skid and bring it back up. It's, it's more instantaneous. That's, that's a benefit from an operational side. Myself, I've had the opportunity to work at a treatment plant up in Morehead, Minnesota when I was in college. And it was a lime softening plant. I know firsthand, once, when you lose that control of the treatment process, it's all hands on deck to try and get it back. But it's not something you can do quick. You change chemicals and then you wait a couple of hours to see what the effect is coming through that treatment process. So that's why I say RO is, we're seeing it looked at more and more often as a comparison to lime softening. When you compare capital costs, base, operational complexities, it's, RO is gaining quite a bit of ground in a lot of places. South Dakota-wise, off the top of my head, Yankton's the only one I know of. Up in North Dakota, there's Fargo's got RO plant north. Hillsborough's a small one, real water one that has a, a small RO system. Grand Forks put in RO system. So it's getting, those are all within, I forgot how long, Hillsborough was first, that was a number of years ago. Grand Forks and Fargo were within the last five years, those went into operation.
First of all, I had, I got an apology, that's what my little chuckle earlier when we were talking about the state and the state permit. Normally, that's the first time I think I've ever heard where the state has said, no, we won't give you a permit till after you're already up and rolling. Usually it takes forever to get a permit to do construction. So that wasn't the reason for my little chuckle. It wasn't anything to do with the systems or anything else or your presentation.
Completely fine.
I was shocked by what you said about the state, so.
They, they do want it completed well before the time you're going to start discharging. But that's, that's two years from now when we'd be operating. Those initial steps that we go through to make sure we vet any water quality concerns and initial reviews, to do that initial check with them that there's no concerns. Then we're ready to submit the application for discharge permit now. Like I said, they don't, they don't want to issue a discharge permit without a system there to discharge.
I get that. And you're, I, I guess that sort of somewhat missed that in your, in your little presentation. But that's a good explanation. And quite frankly, I got a lot more out of your presentation tonight than I did in a couple of previous ones. I can't say that I have any. I don't, I'll be honest, I don't have a strong feeling or a strong vote either way. I have reservations about both systems. I have reservations about costs. And this, Brian, is just, do we actually need to make a, a move here tonight or?
You don't need to make a motion tonight, but you have 30 days from April 11th. So it could certainly be on the old council agenda for the May 2nd.
So what, what, what's the process of conversion look like? What would residents expect two years down the road, we're operational? Do they notice anything different? Is it just business as usual?
You know, as we get up to that day where we start running the system and pushing softer water out to the city, there, there would be plenty of notification or, you know, public awareness put out there. You know, whatever's needed. I don't know what that, those steps exactly would be at this point. But it could be, you know, meetings, it could be information provided out to community just so they're aware that when this day is coming, you then have the chance or you're going to want to take a look at your water softener and at a minimum adjust it down so your softener doesn't think it's still the hard water coming in. And then you can make that determination themselves if they want to try shutting it off and see what it's like or, or how that works for them. But when it, it's, when we get to that point, you know, we're going to make sure the cities where this is switching over now, you're going to see some changes largely in feel or aesthetics of the water, just so it doesn't catch any, hopefully catch anyone off the guard.
You had said that if you have a softener system in your home, it's just the hot water. But this system would run through both.
Yeah, this, this would be your whole house, yep.
Any other questions or comments?
You go.
No, I don't have a question.
Okay. This has been a process that's been going on for a long time. And I think we've studied it, we've gotten the information that we need. You know, looking at the difference between, especially with the ARPA funds that are coming in, looking at the difference between expansion with the RO and expansion without the RO. You're talking about $8 and 1 cent a month, or essentially it's 26 cents a day to add RO.
And if you take into consideration a bag of less salt per month, that's what, six, seven bucks? It puts those costs really close together from what the end user will see on a monthly basis.
Yeah. Well, I'm, you know, I'm going to make a motion that we accept the bid with the RO.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the bid with the RO? Any other comments, questions that anyone has? This, this is probably for Christina, I would assume. So when it comes to these ARPA funds, can you just re-explain to us what we get and how we get it?
I would say that's a good question, but.
We sent an application in to the state January 1st. They just awarded it last week. They awarded 30% of the project. So 30% of the project is at roughly $7.5 million. At $7.5 million, what obviously we would bond less for than, we don't have to borrow 25 million now. We borrow 7.5 million less. So we would essentially borrow around 19 million. I am told that those ARPA funds will come in as first. So we can certainly receive those funds as we're spending the money. So those funds will come in right away. Not before we spend $7.5 million, but as we spend, it'll come in.
So essentially they've awarded us up to $7.5 million, but we have to use it on 30% of a project.
Right.
So if we do a lesser project, we won't get the full amount that they awarded us?
Right. It would, we would have, we would amend it essentially.
I think. I, I think the reason we had talked about pushing the vote, the actual vote off to the meeting in May was to allow residents to get the information probably in the paper so that they would have a comment period time. I think that's why we, we were going to push it off. So we have studied it a lot, Dave, and we have. But if we want to have that information out there, we may want to wait.
I do have to say, I appreciate those that came today to speak about it because, but I think you're probably in the minority. Where I think a lot of them don't understand this, even though we have talked about it a lot, but the residents. And so I kind of agree with Barb there that it'd just be nice, since we do, I know we don't have a lot of time, but May 2nd, if we could vote then. But that way we do have some time for the residents to just understand. And they, they put great information together. So thank you guys, because I think it's, it just lays it out so nicely. And I think that would be nice if we can get that out to the residents. And that way if anybody else wants to speak up, they have a chance to.
Yeah, I would, I would, I'm going to circle back to our communication item. I think we, I agree, I think we need to put it off and make sure we do a, a large blast, let's say, to the community that this will be your last opportunity to speak on this issue. And I know we've done surveys in the past. I would, I'm going to probably ask for some sort of an informal survey. Hopefully we have a room full and hopefully we got to go to the high school. Because I, I think it's an important matter for the, for the residents. And I, I think it's, this has crept up on us and we've kind of just not really stepped up and made a decision. It's likewise, it's stepped up or it's had that same effect on the residents. They're, they're kind of all of the ones that I've spoke to, they're all over the board too. Residents and businesses are all conflicted with some of the same conflicts that we have. So I hate the idea of deferring. But I think that's the, the one last effort that we can do to allow the people to have one more chance to vote and for us to have one more chance to just, after the presentation tonight, have, make our, make and form our own opinions.
So I have a, I have no doubt that the journal will do a great job of. I'm just wondering if, sometimes I know that, that the journal's been very generous in opening up the occasional article to be a public article. Maybe that would just be a compromise where we could maybe ask or pay for that to be a public item rather than a subscribed item. I don't know if you've ever seen that before, but when they've opened them up to be a public item, then it can be shared, it can be seen by anybody.
Okay, I've got one, one other question or concern or possible concern. Any concern as far as the bonding, the rates that are current today, are they going to be still current another month? You know, it's one of the unknowns, but we're seeing everything in the media here recently about inflation, about rates going up and things like that. Is that a legitimate concern or is that something that I can just forget about? We don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's a concern, however, you know, the next meeting would be a resolution. And then once they get that resolution rolling, then, you know, we'll, we'll get everything rolling.
You know, if you, if you paid attention, the feds increased the interest rate last month. They're anticipating, or at least in the news release, they anticipate six more weight rate adjustments this year. So I'd anticipate one about every two months. What those adjustments were, we, we don't know. So even after we engage with DA Davidson, you know, and they, and they go out for the bonds and take bids, that interest rate may change even during that timeframe. So, you know, those, those companies that are bidding on the bonds in that gap, interest rates at the Fed may go up another half a percent or whatever. So we don't know what those rates are going to be. It's a competitive bidding environment, just like a construction project. But I would anticipate, you know, about every month and a half to two months, the feds will increase the, the rate.
So Brian, my, I did have a question when it did go up, and I was thinking a half a percent.
I think it went up a half. If you looked at the 30-year mortgage rate, I think it went up more than a point. So how that correlates.
So at this point, we have a motion and a second. I'm, from hearing from several of you, you're not ready to, to vote on this. Can we defer the? I don't want the vote to reflect that they want to wait. That's my concern. Because at this point, what I'm hearing is there'd be some nays based upon the, and not necessarily against the project, but, but against the timing of the motion. And I guess my question would be, can we defer the vote with, with a motion and a second in hand?
You can withdraw the motion.
You need to have to withdraw.
As long as the person who made the motion in the second, they could withdraw it.
I will tell you that in my, however many years I've been on council, this is truly the only issue that people have reached out to me for. And it's been overwhelmingly, I, I don't know what businesses or people you guys have talked to, but every business that uses water that I've gone into has said, absolutely, we want this. I know the guy who owns Scooters has replaced his espresso machine like three times because of the Brandon water. I know the people that own Kingbird have made the same comments about having to triple filter their water just so it doesn't ruin their espresso machine again. So I don't know what more information I would need. I've already gone out and sought information from people, so I'm still good. I would, I would say, I agree with, with Tim. I've lived in Brandon since kind of 78, I believe we moved here. And of all the good things, you know, you hear tons of good things about Brandon. The one thing I would say that I've negatively heard over the years is water. And we're going to, this is an opportunity to make a difference. I appreciate Barb's comment that this council will impact years down the road with, with the decision that you make. And I'm all for the RO. I think, I appreciated Lee and I think it was Brett's comments. I think to me, a realtor that has been around, people coming into town, it obviously is a topic of conversation. And so I think it's, I, I'm, I'm certainly definitely, and I think you're all in favor of this. And I understand the concern about communication. But at this point, I don't hear a retraction of the motion, nor do I hear a, and at this point, I, I believe we will have to vote if I don't hear that.
Okay, I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to retract it. We have talked about this, it's been in the paper, we had. We have had people that have shown up here, we've gotten letters.